All right, this time I'd like to call the July 20th, 2020 City of Vandelia Council Meeting to Order. We'll start with a moment of reflection followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Thank you. Please stand for the pledge.
(inaudible)
Thank you. All right, council, you've had an opportunity to review the council study session minutes of June 15th, 2020, the council meeting minutes of June 15th, 2020, the council special meeting minutes of June 19th, 2020, and the council study meeting minutes of June 22nd, 2020. Are there any comments? Being none, they stand approved. We have no communications, petitions, or awards, nor do we have a public hearing. And it brings us to comments from interested citizens. So if you'd like to make a comment, please state your name and address for our record and your comments.
So my name's Bill McIntyre. I'm with the Vandelia branch of the library. Can you guys hear me okay? Is this the proper way to sort of jump in in this portion?
Yes. You sound good.
Great. All right, well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, members of the public watching at home. Again, my name's Bill McIntyre. I'm the manager at the Vandelia Branch of the Dayton Metro Library. And I wanted to let the community know about a free food program being offered at the Vandelia Library in partnership with the Children's Hunger Alliance and Premier One Produce. Every Wednesday from now through the week of August 27th, from 3:30 to 4:30, parents can pick up 10 shelf-stable meals per child at the library. The child doesn't have to be present, so if you're a parent running in on your lunch break, that's fine, too. The prepackaged meals contain something from all the basic food groups, and it does take into account food allergies. For instance, they have a non-peanut-based version of peanut butter in the meals in case your child doesn't have a peanut allergy. And the meals are all different, so a kid's not going to get stuck eating the same thing for 10 days in a row. And in accordance with the COVID-19 guidelines, library staff will wear gloves, face masks, and practice social distancing. We have food programs set up in the parking lot, and parents can come up, tell children that they have. We then take the bag meals, set them on a cart. The parents can then take it and bring it back to their car. In addition to the meal program, we also have, we're also handing out boxes of assorted fresh produce. The produce program is open to anyone. You don't have to have a child. Anybody can come in. The produce boxes are 22 pounds, and you can take as many as you want. You aren't limited to just one. And the boxes contain apples, oranges, potatoes, onions, celery. They're pretty big. And it's my understanding that the produce that we have in these boxes was originally for schools, and then due to school closures, the government came in and purchased it all so the food wouldn't go to waste. So in Vandelia at the library, this past week was our second week with the program, and we had a great turnout. We handed out 380 meals to local children and also distributed about 1,400 pounds of produce. We had a line going down the sidewalk on Dixie. It was really nice. So if you want more information, you can visit the library's website or our Facebook page. You can stop by the library or give us a call at 463-2665. And again, this is a free program. You do not need a library card. It's every Wednesday until the week of August 27th, from 3:30 to 4:30, at the Vandelia Branch Library at 3:30 South Dixie. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Mr. McIntyre. That sounds like a great program. Is there anyone else that would like to speak or make a comment?
Yeah, Holly's unmuted, but she's not coming through. Let me try this one. Holly, you there now?
Well, we may be having some technical difficulties, but we're going to go ahead and move on to the city manager's report. We have some information items. Mr. Altshaus.
Thank you, Your Honor. Council established the summer schedule for council meetings. Thus, we will only be having the August meeting. Will be held on Monday, August 17th at 7:00 p.m., with a workshop beginning at 6:00 p.m. on that day.
All right, thank you. And we have an action item.
Thank you, Your Honor. Dan Shoup has submitted a request for a one-year extension of time to complete the sidewalk construction of all remaining vacant lots in the Brown School Village subdivision in Section 4. Sidewalk is outstanding on lots 42 through 45 for a total of four lots. The new deadline completion will be August 8th, 2021, and a performance bond is in place as surety.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the extension of time for Brown School Village, Section 4, until August 8th of 2021.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Forrest, and a second by Councilman Blakeslee that we approve the extension of time for Brown School Village, Section 4, to August 8th, 2021. Are there any comments or questions? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Councilmember Forrest.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we'll move on to old business, which we have none, and that brings us to our first resolution of the night, and that's Resolution 20-R-40. Mr. McDonald, by title only.
A resolution establishing a commercial facade improvement program.
Thank you. Mr. Altshaus.
I'm going to defer to Mr. McDonald to cover this one.
As council knows, we talked about this at the prior work session, and staff has presented a draft of the facade program. To, it establishes a given area where the program's eligibility, which is basically along the main stretches of road, establishes minimum amounts for the program. And that's all I can remember off the top of my head. There was one thing that in the program that was received by council, it did have a mission in that we only spoke of removal of signs as opposed to removal and putting up a new sign. But we could ask Ms. Holloway to chime in if anyone has any additional questions.
It was for a total of up to, I think, $15,000?
Yes, and a minimum, I think, of $2,500.
Yeah, it's a fairly substantial incentive.
Okay. Have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move that we recommend approval of Resolution 20-R-40 establishing a commercial facade improvement program. With the specific clarification that the program eligible improvement shall include the removal and replacement of legally existing obsolete and nonconforming signage.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Lewis and a second by Councilman Blakeslee that we approve Resolution 20-R-40 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Councilmember Forrest.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 20-R-41. Mr. McDonald.
A resolution awarding the bid for the Adeline Avenue Drainage Improvement Project requested by the Public Works Department to Durst Brothers Excavating at the lowest and best bid price of $77,027.50.
Thank you. Mr. Altshaus.
Thank you, Your Honor. Bids were opened publicly for the Adeline Avenue Drainage Improvements Project on Tuesday, July 7th, 2020. There were 10 sets of plans and specifications that were issued, and eight contractors submitted bids for this project. Bids ranged from $77,027.50 to $118,717. We're recommending the bid be awarded to Durst Brother Excavating Incorporated as the lowest and best bidder at the price of $77,027.50. The engineer's estimate for the project was $100,000, and the project will be paid out of the Storm Sewer Fund. We have $105,000 appropriated for the project in our 2020 budget. The project has a completion date of December 4th, 2020.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution 20-R-41.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakeslee and a second by Councilwoman Forrest that we approve Resolution 20-R-41 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Councilmember Forrest.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 20-R-41. Mr. McDonald.
A resolution awarding the bid for the Adeline Avenue Drainage Improvement Project requested by the Public Works Department to Durst Brothers Excavating at the lowest and best bid price of $77,027.50.
Thank you. Mr. Altshaus.
Thank you, Your Honor. Bids were open publicly for the Adeline Avenue Drainage Improvements Project on Tuesday, July 7th, 2020. There were 10 sets of plans and specifications that were issued, and eight contractors submitted bids for this project. Bids ranged from $77,027.50 to $118,717. We're recommending the bid be awarded to Durst Brother Excavating Incorporated as the lowest and best bidder at the price of $77,027.50. The engineer's estimate for the project was $100,000, and the project will be paid out of the Storm Sewer Fund. We have $105,000 appropriated for the project in our 2020 budget. The project has a completion date of December 4th, 2020.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution 20-R-41.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakeslee and a second by Councilwoman Forrest that we approve Resolution 20-R-41 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Councilmember Forrest.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 20-R-42. Mr. McDonald.
A resolution awarding the bid for the Northwoods Boulevard and Falls Creek Drive intersection improvement project requested by the Public Works Department to Outdoor Enterprise at the lowest and best bid price of $552,078.95.
Thank you. Mr. Altshaus.
Thank you, Your Honor. Bids were opened or bids were received for the Northwoods Boulevard and Falls Creek Intersection Improvements Project on Tuesday, July 14th, 2020. 14 sets of plans and specifications were issued, and eight contractors submitted bids for the project. Bids ranged from $552,078.95 to $650,500. We are recommending that the bid be awarded to Outdoor Enterprise as the lowest and best bidder at the bid price of $552,078.95. The engineer's estimate for the project was $600,613. We will be receiving funding through the Ohio Public Works Commission. We have been approved for a grant of $400,000 for this project. Our local share of the project will be paid out of the Safe and Stable Levy Fund. Choice One Engineering performed the design work for this project at a cost of $36,500. The project has a completion date of July 30th, 2021.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 20-R-42.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Ayers and a second by Councilman Follak that we approve Resolution 20-R-42 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Forrest.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 20-R-43. Mr. McDonald.
A resolution authorizing the purchase and installation of a service body and truck-mounted lift by the Public Works Department from K.E. Rose Company in the amount of $97,125.
Thank you. Mr. Altshaus.
Thank you, Your Honor. At the June 15th meeting, city council approved the purchase of a 2020 Ford F-550 two-wheel-drive SD regular cab and chassis from Bowtownson Ford at the cost of $37,799. Since then, we have legally advertised and publicly opened bids for the service body and truck-mounted lift to outfit the cab and chassis for our use. Bid packages were also sent directly to two local vendors that we purchased from in the past, and one company, only one company submitted a bid for the equipment. We're recommending that we purchase and have installed the service body and truck-mounted lift from K.E. Rose Company at the submitted cost of $97,125. We have appropriated a total of $135,000 in the 2020 capital improvement budget for the purchase of the truck and associated equipment. The grand total of the cabin chassis and the lift equipment is $134,924.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 20-R-43 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follak and a second by Councilman Blakeslee that we approve Resolution 20-R-43 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Councilmember Forrest.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 20-R-44. Mr. McDonald.
A resolution affirming that money obtained by the city under Ohio Senate Bill 310 will be expended solely as required under House Bill 481 and creating a new fund for receipt of such money.
Thank you. Mr. Altshaus.
Thank you, Your Honor. Senate Bill 310 was passed to establish a process for distributing funds provided by the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act. The requirements of the act are as follows. Number one, the city must possess a resolution, or pass a resolution, rather, affirming that the funds received will be expended only to cover costs consistent with the requirements of the CARES Act. Number two, the expenditures must be due to COVID-19 and not included in the 2020 budget. And number three, the expenditures must have incurred between March 1st, 2020, and December 30th, 2020. Compliance requirements of the act are, number one, all proposed expenditures must be encumbered by October 15th, 2020. And number two, the final balance must be paid in full honor before December 28th, 2020. And finally, the information regarding the expenditures related to the payments received under this program must be submitted to the county. Expenditures that are not encumbered by the state must be remitted back to the county treasurer.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 20-R-44.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Forrest and a second by Councilman Lewis that we approve Resolution 20-R-44 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Before I do, I just wanted to make one comment. This is commonly known as Senate Bill 310, but as it was going to be voted upon, it was, there was an amendment at the last minute, and they threw it into House Bill 481. So that's why you see two different things here. The municipal league sent out the proposed form language using Senate 310, and then they went and changed it. But the Attorney General has already said they know what we're talking about. So even though it's 310 now, you will see it in the future as House Bill 481.
Thank you.
And with that, call the roll.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Councilmember Forrest.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 20-R-45. Mr. McDonald.
A resolution combining the Vandelia Cultural Arts Committee and the Vandelia Public Arts, I'm sorry, and the Public Arts and Vandelia Committee and forming a single committee, authorizing the city manager to work with the Dayton Foundation and Vandelia Butler Foundation in order to combine the Vandelia Cultural Arts Fund and Public Arts in Vandelia Fund into a new, single fund for the new combined committee.
Thank you. Mr. Altshaus.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution authorizes the city manager to merge the Public Arts and Vandelia Committee-advised Field of Interest Fund and the Vandelia Cultural Arts Advised Field of Interest Fund into a single fund called the Vandelia Arts Fund. This resolution would also combine the Public Arts in Vandelia and Vandelia Cultural Arts Committees into one committee, being the Vandelia Arts Council. The council will be comprised of no less than three voting members and two nonvoting members. The majority of voting members would be residents of the city with an interest in local arts and the artistic community. Nonresident members must either be employed in the city or be an artist or otherwise involved in the artistic community of another local community. Nonvoting members would consist of a council liaison and represented from the city manager's office.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Yes, Your Honor. I make a motion that we approve Resolution 20-R-45.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Woods and a second by Councilman Blakeslee that we approve. Resolution 20-R-45 is presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Councilmember Forrest.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. We have no ordinances in our first reading or second reading. We do have several emergency ordinance, and the first one being Emergency Ordinance 20-17. Mr. McDonald.
An ordinance to revise appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Vandelia, Montgomery County, Ohio during the calendar year ending December 31, 2020, and amending ordinance 19-24 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Altshaus.
Thank you, Your Honor. Bear with me as I read through these. Finance is requesting approval for the following supplemental appropriation ordinances for an increase in the general fund in the amount of $465,957.80, an increase in the street fund in the amount of $16,198, an increase in the computer legal research fund in the amount of $45, an increase in the CARES Act fund in the amount of $12,274.53, an increase in the stormwater fund in the amount of $6,164, an increase in the FEMA Special Revenue Fund in the amount of $53,744.96, an increase in the Crisis Intervention Training Fund in the amount of $11,250, an increase in the Police Fire Street CIP Fund in the amount of $5,000, an increase in the golf fund in the amount of $675, increase in the water fund in the amount of $13,492, and an increase in the sewer fund in the amount of $13,355. And they're broken down in these increments here. In the general fund, the city manager won an increase of $1,205, which is an increase of 2020 budget appropriations to account for the additional half percent COLA increase. In the information technology, $455, an increase of the 2020 budget appropriations to account for the additional half percent COLA increase. In the legal, $340, increase of the 2020 budget appropriations to account for the additional half percent COLA increase. In nondepartment, there's a $400,000. This is an increase of the 2020 budget appropriations to account for the advancement of monies to the OPWC fund. The city was awarded the OPWC grant funding for the Northwoods Boulevard-Falls Creek Project. This reimbursed fund, or this reimbursed amount will be $400,000, but it will not be received until the completion of the project. Therefore, the amount of $400,000 will be needed to advance from the general fund to the Ohio Public Works Commission fund prior to the award of the contract. Once the monies have been received, the funds will be reimbursed back into the general fund. In the finance department, $760, which is an increase of the 2020 budget appropriations to account for the additional half percent COLA increase. Under tax, $780, increase of the 2020 budget appropriations to account for the additional half percent COLA increase. Under fire, $1,230, an increase of the 2020 budget appropriations to account for the additional half percent COLA increase. In engineering services, $1,125, to increase of the 2020 budget appropriations to account for the additional half percent COLA increase. In public works, $15,343, increase of the 2020 budget appropriations to account for both the additional half percent COLA increase and the 2.5 percent COLA increase for the public works contract with the Teamsters. In vehicle maintenance, $3,733, an increase of the 2020 budget appropriations to account for both the additional half percent COLA increase and the 2.5 percent COLA increase per the public works contract with the Teamsters. In police administration, $1,295, an increase of the 2020 budget appropriations to account for the additional half percent COLA increase. In parks recreation, park maintenance, $870, to increase of the 2020 budget appropriations to account for the additional half percent COLA increase. In parks and recreation under the Recreation Section, $470, an increase of the 2020 budget appropriations to account for the additional half percent COLA increase. In parks and recreation baseball, $16, for an increase of the 2020 budget appropriations to account for the additional half percent COLA increase. Parks and recreation under the soccer program, $8, an increase of the 2020 budget appropriations to account for the additional half percent COLA increase. In parks and recreation under the Recreation Center, $798, increase of the 2020 budget appropriations to account for the additional half percent COLA increase. $135,714.80, this is an increase of the 2020 budget appropriations to account for the additional expenses related to the recreation pool at the Recreation Center only per the contract with SwimSafe. In parks and recreation, Castle Hills Pool, $99,000, a decrease of the 2020 budget appropriations. These appropriations were originally budgeted in this department based on the SwimSafe contract. However, as a result of COVID-19, the pool will not be opening in 2020, and therefore the expenses will only be allocated out of the Recreation Center department. In parks and recreation at the Senior Center, $35, this is an increase of the 2020 budget appropriations to account for the additional half percent COLA increase. Parks and recreation, building maintenance, $780, an increase of the 2020 budget appropriations to account for the additional half percent COLA increase. In the street fund, $16,198, an increase of the 2020 budget appropriations to account for both the additional half percent COLA increase and the 2.5 percent COLA increase per the public works contract with the Teamsters. Now, the computer legal research fund, $45, which is an increase of the 2020 budget appropriations to account for the additional half percent COLA increase. In the CARES Act fund, $12,274.53, it's an increase of the 2020 budget appropriations to account for the reimbursement of expenses to replace lost revenue associated with COVID-19. The city received a stimulus payment from the Department of Health and Human Services Provider Relief Fund and will be subsequently transferred to the general fund to reimburse expenses related to COVID-19. The FEMA Special Revenue Fund, $53,744.96, increase of the 2020 budget appropriations to account for the reimbursement of expenses related to the May 2019 disaster of the tornado. Stormwater fund, $6,164, an increase of the 2020 budget appropriations to account for both the half percent COLA increase and the 2.5 percent COLA increase per the public works contract with the Teamsters. The Crisis Intervention Training Fund, $11,250, increase of 2020 budget appropriations to account for the additional expenses related to the amendment of the contract with the Montgomery County Alcohol, Drug Addiction and Mental Health Services to provide mobile crisis workers to assist police officers with mental health-related situations. Out of the Police Fire Street CIP Fund, under fire, there's $5,000, an increase of the 2020 budget appropriations to account for the unexpected expense for burned containers for training. Out of the golf fund, under operations, $110, this is an increase of the 2020 budget appropriations to account for the additional half percent COLA increase. Out of food service, $110, an increase of the 2020 budget appropriations to account for the additional half percent COLA increase. Out of the course maintenance, $455, an increase of the 2020 budget appropriations to account for the additional half percent COLA increase. Out of the water fund, $13,492, an increase of the 2020 budget appropriations to account for both the additional half percent COLA increase and the 2.5 percent COLA increase per the public works contract with the Teamsters. And finally, the sewer fund, $13,355, an increase of the 2020 budget appropriations to account for both the additional half percent COLA increase and the 2.5 percent increase increase and the two-and-a-half percent increase per the public works contract with the Teamsters.
Thank you. All right. Since this is an emergency ordinance, I will open up a public hearing. So if you'd like to comment on this ordinance, please state your name and address for the record and your comment. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Do you have a motion?
I move that we approve ordinance 20 dash seventeen as an emergency.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Ayers and a second by Councilwoman Farce, that we approve ordinance 20 dash seventeen as an emergency. Are there any comments?
Can the city manager repeat all that one more time?
I would love to do. Call the roll.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have emergency ordinance 20 dash eighteen. Mr. McDonald by title only?
An ordinance authorizing a temporary advance in reimbursement between various funds of the city for expenses relating to the OPWC Northwoods Boulevard-Falls Creek Project, together with all related pertinences thereto, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Althouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the four-hundred-thousand-dollar increase of the 2020 budget appropriations for the advance of monies from the general fund to the OPWC fund for the Northwoods Boulevard-Falls Creek Project. The city was awarded a four-hundred-thousand-dollar OPWC grant for this project. However, those funds are distributed by the Ohio Public Works Commission as a reimbursement. Therefore, when we first expend the funds, the general fund will be paid back as the OPWC reimbursements are received.
Thank you. And since this is a emergency ordinance, I will open up a public hearing. If you'd like to make a comment on this ordinance, please state your name and address for the record and your comments. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Do you have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve ordinance 20 dash eighteen as read. Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakeslee and a second by Councilman Lewis that we approve ordinance 20 dash eighteen as an emergency. Call the roll.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have emergency ordinance 20 dash nineteen. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance approving individual assessment amounts and directing the finance director or her designate to certify the amounts to the county auditor for collection and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Althouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. This ordinance assesses properties within the City of Vandalia for delinquent accounts related to weed cutting.
Since this is a emergency ordinance, I will open up a public hearing. If you'd like to make a comment on this ordinance, please state your name and address for the record and your comment. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Do you have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move that we approve ordinance 20 nineteen as an emergency.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Farce that we approve ordinance 20 nineteen as an emergency. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have emergency ordinance 20 twenty. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance setting the salary for the interim city manager and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Althouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to defer to Mr. McDonald on this ordinance here.
This ordinance was, we are required by our charter to set the salary for the city manager, which would include the interim city manager, through an ordinance. Council had an opportunity to discuss this matter, and I believe a motion would be necessary from a council member specifically stating what that amount would be per pay period.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve ordinance 20 twenty at a additional sum of one-thousand-dollar per pay period.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follak and a second by Councilman Blakeslee that we approve emergency ordinance 20 twenty with a one-thousand-dollar per pay period salary for the interim city manager. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we are, we have reports from boards and commissions, and the first item is a variance for a detached garage at 137 Colebrook Drive. Mr. Althouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. Enclosing your package is a memorandum for Mr. Marlowe wherein an applicant, David Honee, is requesting approval to allow the construction of a three-hundred-and-eighty-foot, sixteen-by-twenty-foot, twenty-four-foot square foot, a detached garage at 137 Colebrook Drive. The zoning code limits the total area of all accessory structures to forty percent of the footprint of the principal building. The footprint of the principal building is eight-hundred-and-seventy-five square feet, therefore limiting the size of the detached garage to three-hundred-and-fifty square feet. The proposed detached garage exceeds the size limitation by thirty-four square feet and encompasses forty-three-point-eight-nine percent of the footprint of the principal building. The Board of Zoning Appeals voted five to zero to recommend approval.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open up a public hearing. So if anybody would like to comment on this, please state your name and address for the record and your comments. I believe the homeowner is online. Good evening. Can you hear us? Apparently not.
Am I required to speak?
No, you're not required to speak, but I just wanted to give you the opportunity that if there was anything you wanted to say, you could do it now.
Bill?
All right. Thank you.
There's nothing I really need to add or want to add. I think David has stated the case very carefully, very clearly. There is a visual that shows that quite a few of my neighbors have something already standing in their properties that exceed that forty percent footprint, and obviously it all went in before the code. So I'd appreciate the city council to look at my modest proposal and give it your thumbs up.
All right. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to close the public hearing. Do you have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move we approve the variance of the detached garage at 137 Colebrook Drive.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Farce that we approve the variance for the detached garage at 137 Colebrook Drive. Are there any other comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have the June bill listing in the amount of two-million-six-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand, ninety-five-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars and nine cents, and the June purchase card detail in the amount of ten-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirteen dollars and nine cents. At this time, we would like to take another shot at comments from interested citizens because I understand we have one more citizen that would like to speak. So if you'd like to state your name and address for the record and your comments?
Yeah. Yeah.
This is Hallie. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to make some comments for DPNL.
No, I forgot my address at 660 Castle Creek. Wanted to let you all know that disconnects for citizens, for residents, are going to start back up for electric utilities. We are planning some ways to help those customers that have fallen behind due to COVID. Disconnect notices will start around August 17th with actual disconnections beginning around September 1. We do have some new payment options, six, nine, and 12-month options. Those will begin August 3rd. They've got some flexible payment plans that they can work with DPNL to be able to afford, to pay off the balances that have built up over the last several months. I encourage everyone, whether you're behind or not, to register online for getting notices and updates, but especially if you do know somebody who is behind in their payments, they should get online at dpandl.com. Hold on, I just lost my spot. Slash, no, that's the MyDPN, that's, that, DP and L slash updates, I'll give you updates on what we're doing. I'm sorry, I had to move my screens around in order to get my mic to work. It's mydpandl.com, and if you register there, instead of calling in and using the IVR, that might save time and energy getting signed up for these payment plans. The other place to look is Miami Valley CAP is managing the funds, the CARES Act funds that Montgomery County received, and they do have around five million dollars that is allocated for utility assistance. So that may be the first stop to send people to Miami Valley CAP and see what they can do for you, even ahead of getting any kind of disconnection notice. Most people know if they are behind. And the other place then, ultimately, we have, are opening up our Gift of Power Program, which usually runs at the end of the winter months. We have that opened up now so that people can go to the Salvation Army and look for help there. Thank you very much for your time and sorry for the technical difficulties.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Wiggins. Okay. At this time, we'll move on to council comments. Mr. McDonald?
Nothing.
Mr. Althouse?
Nothing for you, Your Honor. Thank you.
Councilwoman Woods?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Follak?
I have just a few things, real quick. I just want to recognize both Parks and Recreation and the Fire Department for the neighborhood splash tacklers that they were doing throughout the community at the neighborhood parks. I think with the COVID restrictions and the rec center being shut down and the pool being closed, it was a good way that we were able to take a couple departments and provide that free program to the residents. And then a special thanks to Dave Yenny State Farm, who sponsored and volunteered at the events. I wanted to congratulate Brenda Gossett for retiring from the city. Brenda retired at the end of June after thirty years with the city, so I think it's quite an achievement for somebody that spent thirty years serving our residents, so I wish her well in her retirement. Also, real quick, thanks to residents that were, that live in or around some of the neighborhoods that had some long-term public works projects going on. Brindelstone, Marview, I think Kim Brook, the sewer disconnect program. Those programs, you know, I think when we put those programs out there and those projects out there, they're normally two-to-three-month projects, but because of COVID, you know, some of those, you know, Brindelstone was torn up for six months or longer, so they had the patience while that project got completed. Hopefully, they're happy with the outcome and that long-term, it will create better issues out there, not as many water main breaks and things that we've had out in those neighborhoods. And then lastly, just from a community standpoint, I know some people have probably heard, but congratulations to Austin Greaser, who's a Vandalia resident and a Butler alum that won the 2020 Ohio Amateur Golf Championship and set a tournament record with eighteen under par over seventy-two holes, which I think I read was a twenty-year record that he shattered. So that was a huge accomplishment, so congratulations to him. That's all I got.
Thank you. Councilwoman Farce?
I just wanted to, congratulations to Brenda Gossett. I wasn't able to stop up to her little retirement party, but thirty years is very recognizable for being with our city, and we were sorry to see her leave. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Blakeslee?
Great.